Okay. Well, I'm not getting anything on my screen, but I assume we're up.
Yes, we are.
Okay, so today is Tuesday, September the 8th, 2020. It is the 10 o'clock hour called a meeting of the Delmar County Board of Supervisors to order. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said boards so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, would you please take role?
Supervisor Howard? Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Here.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkwitz?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Here. At this time, we will take a moment of reflection. Okay, and now Jay, if you will please stand.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Introduction of new employees, Jay?
I had promised one this week, but it'll be at the next meeting now. There was a conflict.
You keep promising that.
I did.
So there are no other new employees?
Not that I'm aware of.
County Council, anything to report from closed session?
There's nothing to report today.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention to the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda. And the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there, is there any? Are there any change or corrections? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to our brief reports. From supervisors, and we are going to start with Supervisor Berkwitz.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I had a meeting with the Yurok Tribe with Chairman Joe James and others at Klamath. The tribe is concerned with where the TOT goes from climate businesses and also the plans for the Hunter Creek Recreation Area. Also met with several constituents from Klamath about the loud noises that neighbors are making. And they say they have called Sheriff's Department, but have not yet gotten any response. On a side note, I went to San Francisco for a medical condition, and that's why my boy, my report is so short. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having some minor technical difficulties here today, so you'll have to just look at the black box and visualize it's me. I was able to have several meetings this week, and I'll try to move through them quickly. Highway 199 has come back into the picture recently. As the federal courts have allowed the Delmar County Transportation Commission to grant our motion to intervene. And what that means is that us elected officials in the county can now really represent our people and the voice of our people. In particular, to this project on Highway 199 to improve all aspects of safety on some very critical infrastructure areas on 199. We did discuss that at length at our Delmar Transportation Commission meeting. In addition, during the North Deal meeting, which Supervisor Hemmingson allowed me to attend in his place. At that meeting, we also discussed last chance grade at and the major progress they're making, especially getting some of the environmental work started and going. And hopefully getting that timeline speeded up. Also, attended a California State Association, a county's Board of Directors meeting. We were lengthy, lengthy discussions on the various propositions, 15 through 18 on the ballot, whether or not CSAC would lend support to these propositions. And only one of the propositions CSAC actually lent support to, which was Prop 15. Which kind of surprised me, but it's just the way it rolls. In addition, been talking with a lot of residents along North Bank Roads on some plans to treat sudden oak death diseased tan oak trees here in the near future. And in addition, have communications with the Japan Sister City Network of Northern California and Southern California about an invitation for both the city and the county to be the keynote of this year's Sister City Forum for the state of California, which is coming up the first part of November. Had discussions with residents about Highway 199 issues. Had discussions with Dr. Dally and other state officials concerning COVID-related issues as they affect rural counties and getting sooner releases and allowing more rural control to be done through our public health officers to get things sped up in our economically depressed areas. And had some discussions concerning tri agency and USDA debt settlement as it relates to that. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, good morning. Last week, our local transportation commission met via Zoom meeting. The city requested additional regional surface transportation funding for Sunset Circle. It's a bit of a cash flow issue as some of the commissioners were concerned that additional funding might intervene with an unanticipated transportation need before the end of the year. During my commissioner comments, I asked to revisit a previous discussion the commission had broaching some months back regarding the yellow cautionary speed signs along 199. Many of you know, current state law permits 55 mile per hour speed limits along 199. And the yellow cautionary speed reduction recommendations are just that, recommendations, they're not enforceable. We all know when a few of us travel in excess of recommended speed signs and its results in accidents and injuries and sometimes deaths. When I asked the commission to seek remedy by creating safe speed zone corridors along 199, I was discouraged from trying to address this issue as it was deemed too difficult by each of the members of the Transportation Commission. While difficult notwithstanding, it doesn't circuit, short circuit the issue that we have a problem along these cautionary yellow signs where I would strongly urge that we encourage our Caltrans partners to investigate making some of these areas safe driving corridors where speeds can be legally enforced and reduced. In a short time, we'll be taking up the SGA extended trush, the truck trailer issue along 199. Current law allows for 65 foot maximum extension of the truck and trailer. With board SGA approval, limit will be extended an additional 20, 10 feet, excuse me. I will share more of my concern during the agenda a little later in this meeting, meeting. It saddens me to report the controversial outdoor displays sponsored by the California Endowment remain erected at two locations. These billboards are undisputably political and inflammatory with political statements displayed across the masks of individuals featured as part of a very prudent of mask wearing during the COVID crisis. One sign remains vandalized with the intimidating clenched fists tensored across the support for Black Lives Matter. An organization which spews hate, anti-nuclear family, anti-Semitic propaganda. And across the character, last week, I, I, I brought attention to this, that it should be removed. I have filed an IRS 501(c)(3) complaint, a 13909 complaint requesting the IRS investigate the endowment's violation of using funds to support illegal or terrorist activities and a second violation of the endowment's involvement in political activity. Yesterday, I helped organize a show and shine event at Battery Point Lighthouse parking lot. We were delighted to welcome 35 really cool, classic and antique hot rods for a Labor Day event. While the West was scorching across 100 degree weathers, weather Crescent City was a very comfortable 66 degrees at Battery Point. Our pride and community volunteer group continues to assist the the curb sidewalk and gutter weed abatement every Wednesday. And that includes tomorrow through Sea Cruise Weekend. So volunteer efforts extended to Play Drive, the barbecue pits and Front Street Park and Brother Jonathan Memorial Park in Preston Island and Skateboard Hill. Where volunteers assisted in weed abatement preparation for the recent Toyota commercial film at Preston, Preston Island. Thank you to all the selfless volunteers. And the following businesses, Tab Commercial Properties, Specific Eye Care, Les Schwab Tires, Ocean World, Donison Realtor, Seaquake Brewery, Ran Restaurant, Crescent Ace Hardware, Rental Yard for its donation of specific tools and equipment for the pick program. We welcome additional volunteers to assist the shorthanded city in addressing these needs. Our next meeting will be tomorrow, Wednesday at 10 a.m. at Battery Point Lighthouse. And on a more somber note, today we honor CHP Officer Ernest R. Filio, badge number 3202. On September 7th, 1980, Officer Filio was on routine patrol when he was shot and killed by a motorist. He stopped for questioning. A security guard at a nearby farm operation testified he heard a brief conversation, then the sound of two gunshots. The 49-year-old patrol officer was an 18-year veteran. And 17 of those years spent at the Crescent City office. A description of the security officer led to the capture of Filio's killer. And to that, I remind everybody that law enforcement is an extremely dangerous profession, and that is my report.
Vice Chair Cowan?
Thank you, Chairman Hemmingson. Um, last couple of weeks have been kind of slow. Had a meeting with Daphne and Tony Self and Alan to go over a new location for our shower program, which has been very well received and going very strongly for the last six months. Met with a potential new doctor to our area, gave him and his wife a community tour. Those are always fun to do. To talk about our area and encourage new doctors into our area and other professionals. Went to the women's Republican Women's Luncheon. Met with a constituent regarding some illegal camping going on. Had a few conversations with our airport manager and actually ended up talking with Mark over at DOT regarding the the extension of the contract with Contour, which comes down through the federal government with DOT for EAES service. Our essential air, we do the alternative essential air and contracts are up for Contour, and it was getting a little dicey there, not sure what, you know, they had stopped doing taking reservations because contracts hadn't been signed. So got the news last week that everything was moving forward, which is good news for our community. I think Contour has done an excellent job. And we want to continue our relationship with them. So that was good news. And I'm sure that'll go through before our board, the airport board, hopefully this week. And on today's agenda, on the consent agenda, item number nine is to approve an MOU with the senior center regarding mobile showers. Some of you know, for the past 18 plus months, this was something that I wanted to do. And I've been working with Heather Snow along with Tony Self. Thank you, ladies, for all your hard work and supporting this. And we identified money early on for a mobile shower unit. And about 18 months ago, we brought together 17 nonprofits and faith-based groups and started talking and figuring out how we can make this work. And it's been a long road and a lot of meetings. A lot of good have come from the meetings, other things in other areas. And today we'll finally get, hopefully get the approval on that MOU and we'll get the mobile showers in our community. Senior Center will be doing it, but unfortunately during COVID, they don't want to be running them. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can also use these showers in emergency situations such as a pandemic. And they'll hopefully come in good use while we're under this. Want to welcome Dr. Patel. Thank you, Dr. Patel, for stepping up. I'm sure Dr. Raywald is very excited and happy to have you as exist him with what's going on. He, Dr. Raywald has done a phenomenal job for the past six months, but he's been the only one. So to see that he has help is a really good thing. So welcome, Dr. Patel. And that's it for me. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a few meetings, also had a resource conservation and development council meeting via Zoom. Had a Northern Rural Training and Employment Consortium meeting also via Zoom. All the meetings have been via Zoom. We had a tri-agency meeting. I was asked to be a panelist on the Entanglement Science webinar that I participated in. I did a gender review. As was mentioned, had a local transportation commission meeting. And I want to thank Supervisor Howard for stepping in for me on the North Deal meeting, as I had to attend to some family matters. And as Vice Chair Cowan said, I signed the grant agreement with DOT for the AEAS program for Contour Airlines. So that is in place now. You should be able to hopefully, if not now, very soon be able to schedule your tickets if you would like to fly on Contour Airlines. Okay, so now we're going to move on, and I think we'll take up the consent agenda. We'll be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the I'll second the motion to approve the consent.
Okay, the motion by Supervisor Howard, seconded by Vice Chair Cowan.
Mr. Chairman, pull item number six for additional discussion.
Okay, we'll pull item number six. Any public comment on the consent agenda minus item number six?
I have a written one, and it's regarding the proclamation.
Okay.
And it is from Mr. Jeff L. McCadden. And it says, I find it extremely ironic in Congress, incognorous, sorry, that both our county and city governments are acknowledging the United States Constitution. In a recent meeting, several of our supervisors did everything except take a knee, bow their heads and throw a fist in the air in response to pleas from supporters of the Communist Antifa front group Black Lives Matter. I'm surprised that our local governments have not suspended the pledge of allegiance before meetings. For years, our schools have indoctrinated Delmar youth to Marxist ideologies like critical race theory. Meanwhile, 64% of our children are functionally illiterate and 74% fail to meet minimum standards in math. Not for a lack of funding, but schools lack the will to teach the basics. I asked this forum once before if they stand with the United States and our constitution or bend a knee to the Marxist state of California. Only one replied. After the public exhibition in support of Black Lives Matter, I can understand why. Both the California State Legislature and Senate have approved the removal of California Civil Rights Act dating back to 1968. The following phrase is to be stricken from the state constitution. The state shall not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin. The rights guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution are civil rights. This new legislation will give the Democrat-run government of California the power to selectively remove rights of free speech, peaceful assembly, possession of arms, religious liberty, protections from unlawful search and seizure, every right that our forefathers fought and died for. This new legislation will appear as Proposition 16 on our upcoming ballot, deceptively titled repeal of Proposition 209 affirmative action, and the text of this bill has nothing to do with affirmative, affirmative action. For California Democrats, the only way to fight systemic racism is to make it legal for the government to become overly racist. The Fourth of July doesn't mean Independence Day in Delmar County. It is barbecue parades and fireworks day. We get to wave the flag and sing the songs while our rights go out the window. Have any of our leaders ever read the constitution and comprehended the words? You cannot serve two opposing masters by supporting Black Lives Matter in Marxist California. You kneel with those who oppose the constitution of the United States. How can you stand for the constitution while kneeling to the communist Sacramento? Clearly Jeff L. McCadden. And that's the only written one for consent that I've had, Chair.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
Yes, give me one moment. Linda, you are on.
Thank you. This is in regards to item number six. I guess the best thing to do at this point since
you're shortly.
Okay, you want me to wait?
Yeah, why don't you wait until we item up? Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, so I do have a motion and a second. Any further comments from board members? If not, Kylie, would you please poll vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkwitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, and within the consent agenda, we have a proclamation that is proclaiming Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2020. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent, excuse me, of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And to the patriotic acknowledgements which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September, designated September 17th through 23 as constitutional week. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Hemmingson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as chairperson of the Board of Supervisors for the County of Delmar, California, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23, 2020, as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this eighth day of September of this year of our Lord 2020. Okay. Thank you. Now, I think we will take up public comment. It is 10:25. Public comment, Kylie?
I don't have any written public comment at this time. I'm gonna wait and see if anybody raises their hand online.
Okay.
Just one moment. Linda, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Hello? Hello in there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So, um, you know, I have, I have got to say, in all the years that I've lived here, I've never seen South, South Beach so crowded. And which is a cause for concern because the speed limit is 55 miles an hour. And if we're going to develop that area for campers and RVs and all these vehicles to be double parked where you can't see to get in or out, you might want to consider lowering that speed limit. It is a dangerous situation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Kylie?
I'm just gonna give it a few more moments, Chair. And I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, well, let's take up item number six. Roger?
Yes, I brought this to everyone's attention. I have some genuine concerns about this endorsement of the SGA trucks. And I know there's a pending lawsuit which is about to be mitigated, which may free up some of the concerns I currently have, but what we're talking about is a limit right now, the 65-foot truck. Now, it will be increased 10 feet additional to 75 feet with the SGA release on 199 and 197. So my concern is, I don't think these safety issues have been explained to me what's going to take place because right now these big trucks coming down the road are having to cross the double line to negotiate some of the twists and turns. Now, it may be corrected, but I haven't seen or heard that that's going to be addressed. And I'd like to see the horse before the cart before we go supporting SGA. Now, the other aspect of it is the so-called economic benefit of moving larger trucks into an area a road that is obviously not as good as it should be, even with the improvements. And is there an economic benefit? Now, I'm sitting here looking at the list, including all the different folks who are part of this. But I don't see Walmart here, and they're probably the biggest importer of freight coming in, and they're not in support of it. They say there's no economic benefit in moving to the larger trucks for their purposes. And of course, they can come up one-on-one. So I have these concerns. I'd like to see them addressed. I'd like to actually see this matter be tabled until we can get an explanation of what improvements are going to be made by Caltrans before we go in forward and endorse this. This new SGA, no doubt with the road in its current condition, we can expect an increase in accidents, injuries, and perhaps even deaths because of these big trucks coming down 10 foot longer. So I have some concerns, and I'd like to see them addressed. And I would hope our board would table this matter at a later time. Certainly, there is no rush on here with the pending lawsuit at Richardson Grove. So I would ask that this matter be tabled to a later date until we have Caltrans explanation.
Okay, and with that, I'm sure Supervisor Howard, you'll have some stuff to say. I know that I do with, when we have a supervisor that doesn't understand what it is that we're proclaiming or what we're asking for. Chris, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I'm just shocked that a sitting supervisor that just spoke about Highway 199 and the dangers of speed, not even 10 minutes ago, has the gall to make a statement of this nature about improving the safety for all motorists on Highway 199. It's like he hasn't even been attending board meetings for the last decade plus or lived in this county. Oh, by the way, which you don't. So I'm not entirely sure where this is coming from. You clearly do not pay attention to the importance of safety improvements on some of the most critical routes that bring people to our area to enjoy this great natural spot that you just touted not 10 minutes ago. So I'm just curious why there's so much uncertainty about 199 when it's been on record in this county since 2005 that these improvements have been needed. You're not even talking about SGA trucks here. SGA is a funding mechanism to improve these critical pinch points on this road. That's all it is. And yet you're sitting here And yet, you're sitting here and supporting Epic, you're supporting Friends at Delmar, and you're also supporting the Center for Biological Diversity, a group that you have spoken about adamantly against in the last decade. So I'm not sure where this is coming from, but clearly, being uneducated as a board supervisor in Delmar County, it's not coming across well for you, Supervisor.
Is that a question to me, Mr. Howard?
No, it's a statement.
Because you just asked questions of me, which demand that I respond to some of your ridiculous statements. Now, do you want my response, or are you just willing to make a speech?
No, it's actually stating clear fact, which you clearly don't understand.
So you don't have a problem with the Caltrans explaining these safety improvements before we willy-nilly go into STA A and extend ten feet more? You don't have a problem with understanding, well, first of all, I see Alexander Echo Dairy Farm. I don't even know why you're having this conversation. You should have recused yourself, since you're one of the supporters of STA A. And you're not.
You're not.
And you know what, Mr. Hemmingson, excuse me, you gave me the floor. Don't yank it away. You can't do that, even as you as the chairman. I'm gonna continue to.
Give you.
I'm gonna.
Did not give you.
Fight these interruptions, bring up attention, not in support of Epic, not in support of Epic, in support of safety concerns, safety concerns on an already troubled road. And I think it was you who said, let's not question Caltrans when it comes to cautionary speed zones. Ms. Sutter just mentioned about a cautionary speed zone possibility. You've negated it. It's too difficult. So you and I are not on the same page, Mr. Howard, and I won't, I won't go into the whys and the wherefores. While you want to get on your soapbox and make this, I'm bringing up legitimate concerns about putting a ten-foot extension on an STA A truck without having explanation from our Caltrans partners. Simple, to the point. Now you can interrupt me, Mr. Hemmingson.
Well, thank you for giving me, or Roger. Yeah, you know, the ridiculous thing about this is Roger has been, should have been involved with this from the start, just like the rest of, or not from the start, but since he's been a supervisor and chooses not to. He chooses, he chooses to start picking at things that have already been discussed, already been explained. These, this, this road is not STA A accessible at this time and won't be until the improvements are made. He neglects to say that part of it and thinks that we're just going to let these STA A trucks go through. That is not the case. He is not speaking correctly. He does not comprehend what is being put before him. He is having a hard time with this issue, and he jumps out there at the, at the first chance to say something about this, that he has absolutely no comprehension of what we've been talking about for the last fifteen years. So for him just to come out and say, we're willy-nilly gonna put STA A trucks on that road before it is, that is, the changes have been made, is totally wrong. He's absolutely off base in, in what he's saying. And, you know, if you want to read what's going on or find out anything, go to the Caltrans website. Do not listen to this man. He has no information that is credible. So please, please do your homework. These improvements are needed to be made, whether it's STA A approved or not. It's not an extension of a truck. It is the industry standard. That is what it is. An industry standard truck to be able to move on this road. They have to be reduced to a, to a length to be operating on this road right now. So with that, we'll take the public, public comment. I think Linda Sutter had something to say on item number six.
Linda, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Okay, yeah, here's the thing. There were more than fifteen hundred signatures collected from area residents from the Hiouchin Gaski area as well as other people in regards to this. And now, what I'm hearing is, is that Mr. Howard, because the federal court made him the intervenor, is gonna tout that and take and turn a deaf ear to the other people. And this is because he does, he does work for Alexander Farms, and he should have recused himself. He has no say in this matter whatsoever. And certainly, I understand that the roads are going to be widened for STA A trucks. But you know what? Woe to your families and to your family members who have a potential of being perished by one of those trucks when and if it comes to be. May that be a curse on all of you who decide to do this for Alexander Farms. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment, Kylie?
I'm just gonna get a, give it a few more moments, Chair. And I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion, Chair Hemmingson, and make sure that this motion is being stated with conviction by previous boards, by our state senator, by our state assemblyman, by our congressman, by the California Chamber of Commerce, and many, many business organizations and motorists and tourists that do risk their lives at these five pinch points on Highway one ninety-nine every day. And to just get to a point where we could safely improve access for everyone on this highway is why I'm throwing my motion on the floor today for approval of this resolution.
I'll second you. Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Howard, seconded by Supervisor Cowan. Any further comments? Kylie, would you please poll a vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Getlin?
No.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay. So with that, we are going to move on to our ten thirty-five item, a COVID update by Dr. Raywell.
Good morning, everybody. I'm not going, I'm not going to go through all the the national worldwide data, except very briefly. You probably know over a hundred and eighty thousand deaths in this country, well over two million confirmed cases. California is actually doing reasonably well compared to last month overall. Our numbers are more or less stabilized, although there are lots of parts of the state where quite a lot of activity going on. Locally, we're doing reasonably well. I think we're, as I've said before, we're about where we would have expected to be or hoped to be at this point in the summer. Probably everyone is aware of the new system for measuring impact on counties in terms of what can be open and what can't be open, Blueprint for a Safer Economy, I think it's called. It was rolled out during discussion last time I presented to the board. And the first update has happened literally yesterday. We are still in tier three, which is one step below the most open tier. We are kind of skating on the edge a little bit, kind of depends on how the data is going to be used by the state. There was a method in place to give some credit to counties that do a lot of testing. They could use that to offset their case counts a little bit and keep them in a better tier. They also built in a small penalty if you don't have good testing in the opposite direction. So they would amplify your case counts by virtue of the fact that you didn't have enough testing going on. I am told as of this morning anyway, that that's not going to apply to small counties under a hundred thousand people. I'm still trying to get some clarity from the state acting health officer on that point, and I have not heard back yet. But right now, we're in tier three, which is next to highest level on this new strategy, this new tiering of the counties into different categories. Most of the rest of the state is in tier one, which is essentially where we were last month, being on the watch list. If you are in tier one, you're, you never left the watch list, or you basically are operating at the level that would have been in place had that system been carried forward. The other item of news is kind of an update on the, the process that we talked about last time about working in partnership with Humboldt and UHS to develop a local testing capacity that will allow us to offer testing for a whole variety of venues. Still work in progress. We are making some steps. We'll probably be asking the board to review this and give your approval. I think we're required to do that. We were not in a position where we could have it brought and included on today's agenda, obviously, because it wasn't. But we're still working on it, and I expect there'll be some news about that very soon. I don't have a lot else to add. We've been kind of fortunate in this last week or so not have a lot of testing volume. But people should be mindful that if we exceed an average of about one infection confirmed on a daily basis, we risk running into the next lower category or being demoted to that category. And some things that are now open at, you know, my capacity, we'd have to close down again to certain different service levels. And it's complicated. It's hard for me to describe because all the, all the different businesses and activities are now included at the website. So it's really actually much easier for people to go and, and put in Delmar County, and it'll describe what tier we're at. And then below that, there's, there's a scroll down window that will allow you to check on anything that you want to know information about and whether it's available or not. There are still some things that we're expecting from the state, particularly on adult recreational activities, which I think there's a lot of keen interest about. There has been for a long time. And also, we're hoping for some updated recommendations about guidance on gatherings, gathering size in general. And we've all been hoping for that as well. I don't have anything new about school reopening. I think we're in a kind of a wait-and-see mode because it's opening at such a low level currently. So probably more to report on that next time I speak to. And that's it for today. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Doctor, good morning, Dr. Raywell. Thank you for your report. I wanted to follow up on the schools reopening piece of your discussion. It's my understanding that both Ferndale and Humboldt County Fortuna High Schools are both in class in person all week. Is there a particular reason why schools of similar size, especially Fortuna, are able to attend class in person and our schools cannot?
There's not a particular reason from us. I, you know, as I mentioned before, I was just trying to be supportive and offer as much technical advice as I felt I could to the school staff and superintendent as they went forward with planning. You know, it's a kind of a judgment call about where you think your, your most likely increase of case activity is going to be and what your capacity is to compensate for it or to deal with it. Misleading to compare us directly to Humboldt because they have a different resource base, considering that they have a you know, in-county public health lab, which we do not. So they're a little bit better capacity to deal with outbreaks connected to school opening. But you know, largely, this is up to the school districts to decide. So I am not going to speak to what Dr. Frankovich may or may not have thought about that. Case, I was happy to support Superintendent Harris with his decision to, to start with distance learning and phase in people and measure the effect as we went. I thought it made a lot of sense.
Hey, well, I guess we'll have to see how that works out for our kids that are attending school for three hours a day online. It's gonna be a heck of a balancing act for these kids to catch up, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think that's a valid point, but it's also a reasonable means of doing this. It's certainly being duplicated in, in many parts of the country.
Yeah, we'll see if it's successful.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Chair, I have a written public comment from Dr. Raywald.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
I do have additional question for Dr. Raywell before that, if it's okay with you.
Go ahead, Kylie. Would you please go ahead and read public comment?
This one's from a Mr. Jeff L. McCadden, and it says, honorable leaders, your community is in the midst of a pandemic state of emergency, which has ended the livelihoods of many. Instead of extending unemployment insurance to workers, the governor of California has chosen to provide support for illegal aliens and sponsor new reparation entitlements. Workers are barred from earning a living. In California, communists can riot in the streets under the banner of Black Lives Matter, but we cannot do business or work. We stand in line at the market, but we can't stand in line to vote. Homosexuals can congregate in gay bath houses, but we cannot legally attend religious services. Solid, hard-working families in your community are suffering and desperate, though I understand that is not your concern. The Crescent City Council voted to send the delinquent water bills of twenty-seven families to the county tax board for collection along with their real estate taxes. If they cannot pay their water bills, how can they pay their taxes and save their homes? I understand that is not your concern. Delmar politicians spoke during the last meeting about suicide prevention. Those words ring hollow. I would appeal to the merit of compassion over money for kindness for over greed. I understand that this is not your concern. By now, there is a look of boredom on most of your faces. I doubt that there is much interest or empathy for the suffering, despair, and broken dreams of your community. Perhaps you are twiddling your thumb, shifting your eyes, and looking toward the sky. You might be calculating the equity of foreclosed homes that will find their way into public coffers. You may be considering their reassessed taxes for these properties. According to a public survey by Heron Babiak for their book Snakes and Suits, when psychopaths go to work, between one and two percent of the population are psychopaths. Though the most publicized become serial killers or cult leaders, most gravitate to conventional positions of wealth and power to feed their ambitions of earthly godhood. Only a small number of psychopaths are ever convicted and imprisoned. By occupation, most psychopaths fill positions at the top of corporations, government bureaucracies, and in politics. Next in line come attorneys, TV and radio media, salesmen, surgeons, journalists, police, clergy, chefs, and civil servants, positions that offers opportunities to exert and abuse authority over others, kindness or greed. Even if they be were able to communicate to a fly the merits of nectar over dung and rot, the fly would never comprehend. The fly was born in dung, lived its entire youth, infested rot, and feasted upon future decay throughout its life. It is the only good thing that the fly knows. Sincerely, Mr. Jeff L. McCadden. And that's the only written public comment I had for COVID.
Thank you. Roger, you had something to say?
I did. Dr. Raywalder, are you still online with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. I'm looking at the latest cases. And I want to confirm this with you, if you can update this with me, because I'm looking at the website right now. There were a hundred and twenty-four cases. There are two actives. That means a hundred and twenty-two are out in the community. Some seventy-three hundred and fifty-five people have been tested some multiple times, and I think we've stopped doing that. Are these figures accurate, or do you have new numbers on this? And also, in relationship to Pelican Bay inmates, there's never been a COVID nineteen case ever since the COVID virus began. And I believe there were some twenty-six employees, most of whom have returned to work. Can you kind of give us that? And I have one additional question after that. Can you give us an update on that?
I think you summarized it pretty well. I, there, we haven't updated this and I think we're going to be updating it, and probably some of those numbers will change. We had one report over the weekend of someone who turned out to be a Curry County resident. So we wanted to make sure that that was passed on to the proper people in Curry County, which we did. So, yeah, I think your summary is pretty accurate.
Okay, so no additional deaths, of course. So, and going into Curry County in the situation with their dining facilities, dine-in facilities, I think we are now relaxing the rule to fifty percent. That's what my latest figures own. I just want to make sure that this is matching our neighbor to the north Curry County who has an equally number of small cases. I think they've had just a few and are currently, I use the word COVID-free. I know you dispute that. There's no COVID virus moving about that is knowing in Curry County. So can we expect a relaxation for the dine-in services to return to an economically feasible one hundred percent dine-in activity in the near future?
Well, probably not. It would depend on where we end up on this new tiered strategy. You know, if you're asking me personally, I, I have always had some issues with targeting per se, especially since we don't necessarily trace cases back to those events. And our experience has been, you know, it's gatherings, which often involves dining. It often involves similar. And our experience has been, you know, it's gatherings, which often involves dining. It often involves similar kind of social interaction, but it's, it's more happening at home or, you know, unofficially, it's not in businesses. But wide, it is one of those situations proven to be problematic in other parts of the state. So it's built into the state plan for this. I think, you know, having indoor capacity at fifty percent of the usual capacity is a big step. I'd like to see us move up into the highest and give us the greatest flexibility that we can afford, but that'll depend on how well we do going forward and how careful people are. Because, you know, like I said, a lot of the things that we've been seeing this last month and a half have been gathering scenarios. And, you know, people who get sick and get ripped and are tested and we start to talk to them and we find out what their contacts are. And it's, it's not necessarily handing it hand, having, I'm sorry, happening in the public, in a public environment. It's more of a private setting. And a lot of it's just travel related. And we are in the middle of summer, lots of travel in and out of the county. So in a roundabout way of saying it's not really at my pay grade to make that decision. I will happily say that I still have some issues with the idea of, of that change necessarily to the restaurant business where we haven't shown that to be a, so to speak, of case transmission. But people have to remember that there's lots of experience in other parts of the state and other parts of the country that are are pretty conclusive that sometimes restaurants do create cases. So, you know, if, if you want to have a, a change, I think in the, the change at a level higher than, than certainly my office and probably certainly higher than the county level. And that would be where you should focus your attention.
Well, I, I'm sure you can understand the economic viability of a, a Crescent City or Delmar County business who operates in some kind of a service area such as restaurants, that they're, they're not making it. And their economic, there's an economic impact on these, these small businesses that's hurting them. And I'm looking to, I guess, volley support down in Sacramento and, and state California Department of Public Health in relus- relaxing some of these restrictions so that these businesses can stay afloat. And we know that's problematic. And if they go under, their chances of them coming back again are, are nil, and that hurts our community. So I hope you'll, you'll take that argument to Sacramento on our behalf.
Well, we already have. I mean, we've, we, we, meaning local health officers in the surrounding counties, we prepared a document that we sent to the state. I think I mentioned it before to this group. Some time ago. And whether that had anything to do with this new tiered strategy or not, I, I don't know. I'm, it certainly didn't come back to us that way, but it might have made a difference. I, I think I'd be happy to support anything that's reasonable and based on best data. And I agree. I think it's, it's been, it's been a hardship for a lot of businesses, especially those that require a lot of public contact and depend on having people moving in and out of, out their doors every day. Equate us to Curry County exactly, but I understand the problem. And, and it's, it's kind of unique to Delmar because we're both high demand tourist areas in the summer because being on the coast and we're in neighboring states that have a different set of rules. And it, it makes it harder. I, I fully understand that.
I appreciate your efforts. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other supervisors have any comments? Kylie, is there any public comment?
Uh, Chair, I don't have any more written, but I'm going to give it a couple moments online. I'm not seeing any at this time, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Raywall. Appreciate your update. Keep up the good work.
Thank you all. See you next time.
Okay, moving on to item number twenty, our ten forty five item. We have a legislative update from Greg Burns, our advocate in Washington D.C. Good morning, Greg.
Hi, everybody. How are you doing?
Doing well.
Good. I believe I'm going to share my screen with you so that you all can follow along on the PowerPoint that I intend to present. So I'm going to see if that works because I don't have a lot of experience doing that. Can you all see this? That's, I, okay, I see people shaking their heads. Thank you. That's helpful. I'll see if I can even make it a little, well, actually, I'll just leave it as it is. Well, thanks again for having the opportunity to be with you all today. I, you know, here we are in September. It's already. And, you know, normally I would have come out to see you all at some point this summer. I was unfortunately unable to do so, so this is, I guess, the next best thing in today's world. But I did want to chat with you all and provide you a bit of a Washington update. I thought when I was thinking about how, you know, what I might talk to you about, that would just be a little bit beyond the normal updates that I provide to you. And I would try to make this sort of an election look ahead. Not really a forecast so much, but a consideration of what could happen over the next two years, depending on a variety of election outcomes. And, and at the end, sort of wrap it up with what all this will mean for, for you guys specifically. So looking ahead, actually, today is the eighth of September, so the Senate is actually returning from the August recess and is going to get to work this week. I believe the House is going to get to work sometime next week. And the big thing that they have to worry about first is, is funding the government for the next fiscal year that begins October one. We've, we've heard that they have tentatively reached agreement between the administration and the Democrats to fund essentially a clean continuing resolution to continue to fund the government. So at the moment, we don't see that we should have any type of a government shutdown prior to the election, which is positive. After Election Day, they're going to come back for a lame duck session, both in the House and the Senate. The Senate will return first. Likely, they will have to figure out funding for the government for FY twenty one again sometime in December. And then, of course, there will be other things that will occur that we'll talk about. You know, based on the outcome of the election. But, you know, we're in one hundred and sixteen Congress right now. I think under any scenario, we are very likely to see the, the lame duck session of this Congress, those last month or so, to be pretty active. It's possible that they could decide to wrap up all of the FY twenty one appropriations bills in order to essentially clear the deck and, and provide either a new administration or returning Trump administration sort of a, a clean slate for January and for the new Congress. That's pretty common, and I think they probably will, they, or they at least could seek to do that. We may also ha- may also have a passage of a Water Resource Development Act, which is a bill that authorizes programs and projects for the Army Corps of Engineers. The Senate is always going to continue working on nominations. That activity might get a little bit more frantic if, if we were to have an incoming Biden administration. Or it may be more measured and sort of more along the lines of what we've had for the past three and a half years. Should we continue to have a, a Trump administration in the future? And then I, I do want to note that, that we fully expect that all of the remote voting and committee work that has occurred thus far in Congress will continue into next year. I think, you know, we all recognize that even if we were to have a vaccine sometime in the next couple of months, it's still going to take quite a while for that to be rolled out nationwide and for everyone to have an opportunity to take it who would want it. So that said, I think we'll continue to have a lot of work done remotely, even in Washington as well. So this slide actually is updated from the one that I shared with the clerk and the administrator prior to making this presentation a week ago. I wanted to make sure it was as, as up to date as possible. So you'll note that most of this information is updated as of last night, actually. You know, we've seen a little bit of tightening on the national polls in the past couple of weeks. Real Clear Politics is suggesting that former Vice President Biden is up by seven point one percent. The FiveThirtyEight is, you know, that former New York Times site that's become its own offshoot is also projecting that former Vice President Biden does have a lead in the national polls. But I think realistically, we all know that national polls don't mean a lot. They really don't matter in the end. The Electoral College is what matters. But again, those, those polls have tightened over the past couple, couple of weeks. The Gallup POTUS approval rating only gets updated once a month, so that will actually occur again in a couple of days. But we have the latest information from relatively early August. And then you've got some congressional generic ballots. And then the, the chart on the right of the screen shows sort of our projection using a bunch of sources to, to look at the Senate, which is certainly in play, as we'll talk about more looking forward. It's likely that Senator Jones from Alabama, who actually is a Democrat, will almost certainly lose his seat in the coming election to, I believe, former football coach Tuberville. It's also seen that, that Martha McSally and the Cory Gardner, both Republicans in Arizona and Colorado, are, you know, at least good shots at, at losing their seats to Democrats. Susan Collins, Tom Tillis, a little bit less possible that they may lose, you know, it could go either way. You know, and if you really want to look at sort of signals as to where the election is going, you know, paying attention to seats like Joni Ernst, Steve Danes, to a lesser extent, even Kelly Loeffler in Georgia. If those were to flip, you would see, that would certainly indicate some bigger picture occurring nationwide on our election night or the week following, given our mail-in voting propensities these days. So I think last thought that I'll leave you with on this page, though, is that, you know, under any scenario, we have thirty six Republicans and thirteen Democrats in both the House and the Senate that are already leaving because they've already lost primaries or they've just decided to retire. It's pretty common that we have about ten percent turnover, and this is proving to be true, and that's even before the election has occurred. So, you know, somewhere between ten and fifteen percent turnover is typical, but it does mean that even with a new Congress, if everything stays the same, there's still a lot of change that will occur, just given the, the new members and changes in seniority, changes in committee chairmanships, et cetera, et cetera. So here we do have a map on the right that indicates, actually also as of last night, a Real Clear Politics projection of the electoral map. Again, just from, from yesterday. You know, they're obviously leaving a lot of seats or not seats, excuse me, but states in the toss-up category, which I think is totally appropriate, given that we are still fifty some days out from the election. And I think we'll, they'll begin to refine these projections a little bit more as we get closer to the, to November. But given what we do know about where everything, you know, is politically these days, I think there's three possible outcomes that we could likely see in the election from a federal, national level. One is certainly the maintenance of the, the status quo. Essentially, continuation of President Trump's administration. Republicans continue to control, control the Senate and members of the House, or the House is still controlled by Democrats. I think it's also possible that we could see a change of administration where you have a, a new President Biden, but you maintain Republican control of the Senate and you have a Democratic House. And then I think it is possible, and again, I'm not necessarily projecting this, I'm just saying it's a possibility that you could have what we're calling a blue wave where the president is, presidency is won by Mr. Biden. Democrats take the Senate and they retain the control of the House. We don't think based on, you know, where things are right now, that, that the president could win, yet the Senate would be lost by Republicans. I think that's extremely unlikely. And we also don't see any scenario where Republicans win control of the House in this election. So the rest of the slides are going to focus on what occurs when each of these potential election outcomes, you know, happen. So we'll start with the status quo. Essentially, everything remaining relatively the same. I do think that, again, even under this scenario, we're still going to have a lot of activity. You know, starting with a very focused effort on additional COVID nineteen relief and recovery. I don't think that Washington is done with COVID nineteen relief. They certainly have taken a pause. They're going to restart conversations today. I'm going to send you this afternoon another update on the latest. But, you know, broadly speaking, I think after the election, we will definitely see another push on COVID nineteen relief if we haven't gotten there prior to the election. I think the president, of course, is going to definitely focus on cementing his first term executive actions. He's going to add to them. And that's going to be a big push for, for the, his next administration, should he win. I also think that, that they're going to be working on things like immigration. He's definitely going to be working on efforts to lower drug prices. He's in active negotiations with pharmaceutical companies right now. Trying to figure out a way that is amenable to pharmaceutical companies to lower drug prices in the country. And I think we've already seen that they'll continue to battle the Affordable Care Act. They're doing so in the courts right now. That's likely to continue. With respect to the Senate, I think they'll continue to focus on filling judicial vacancies. You know, encouraging members of judiciary potentially to leave lifetime seats in order to nominate newer, younger people to the judiciary. They'll continue that, those efforts. And then I think, you know, realistically legislating will be challenging under this scenario, but I would expect that the president will focus on things like another round of tax cuts, primarily capital gains and income taxes. I also think it's very possible that he could continue his push to lower the capital, or excuse me, lower the payroll tax or eliminate it altogether, which is something that they've been sort of wanting to do, or at least the president's been wanting to do for some time. Last but not least, new trade actions. I would certainly expect that the president to make a push for maybe potentially new trade deals. And also to continue his efforts with respect to tariffs, you know, primarily so far they've been, you know, focused on China. Canada's had some more recent ones. But I think that will certainly continue. Again, moving to the next possible scenario, we have the scenario where the administration changes, but essentially Congress remains the same. And I think then the question becomes, you know, would the Senate agree to work with the president of the House? On the one hand, I could certainly argue that the Senate, being held by Republicans, would be reluctant to simply stonewall every single thing that both an incoming President Biden and a House Democratic Caucus would want to do. You know, they would be nervous about the election coming up in twenty twenty two, wanting to protect their seats and their majority. But on the flip side, you could argue that stonewalling everything might be the best thing that they could do politically for themselves. And also traditionally, the president often will lose seats in the midterm election, so they certainly could be angling to try to gain greater, greater control of the Senate and maybe even take back the House in a midterm election if there were a President Biden. So it's really, it's uncertain as to how they would approach it, but, you know, you, again, you could argue other scenario. I do think it's important to note that a President Biden would certainly wipe away nearly all of President Trump's executive actions. That's almost a guarantee. They would stop legal challenges to the Affordable Care Act. And of course, Biden would also then be able to make nominations for the judiciary and for executive positions. But it's really unclear as to how much Mitch McConnell and the Senate Republicans would, would want to work with him. I mean, it should be noted that Mitch McConnell also is up for reelection. He doesn't face the most competitive race at the moment. But again, that would be an indication. Should he lose in Kentucky, that would certainly be a bad sign for, for Republicans nationwide. And then last but not least, we have the scenario that is, you know, we're calling the blue wave election where Democrats essentially could take control of everything. And I think the first thing that would incur there is, is it possible that Senate Democrats would do away with filibuster? I think, you know, first, they would certainly try to work with Republicans. But I think it's almost certain in my mind that they would at least modify the filibuster, if not do away with it completely. You know, it's already been done away with, with respect to judicial nominations, with respect to the Supreme Court nominations. And really the legislative action and the filibuster are the only things that remain. So again, I do think it's likely that they, they would probably do away with it, which would really you know, open up opportunities for Democrats to do a whole lot. And I think among those things that they certainly would do would be to focus on COVID nineteen funding. The, the candidate Biden has, has proposed a trillion dollar stimulus related to COVID nineteen. He's also got a, what he's calling his Build Back Better Plan. Certainly with respect to infrastructure, I think there would be a lot of activity and focus. I think they definitely would move forward with something that like the House moving forward proposal, which is a sort of a mashup of a whole host of infrastructure priorities from House Democrats, including a transportation authorization bill that would boost funding for, for all kinds of infrastructure programs. that would boost funding for for all kinds of infrastructure programs. Last but not least, well, on this slide, I should say, is climate change. I think it's very apparent that the Democrats would try to do some, take some action on climate change. And it's a very broad climate change proposal, actually, that's the graphic to the right, which is granted small. And maybe difficult to read for you all, but it does have some broad key areas of focus with respect to infrastructure, the auto industry, the power sector, agriculture and conservation and innovation. And I think it would be a very broad climate change push that would sort of infiltrate really most of what the Democrats would try to do in this next Congress, should they take control. Again, other things that they would focus on, I think immigration would be a big thing. It would certainly look different than the immigration plans that the administration would push. I do think that they would focus on DACA or so-called Dreamers. I think they would probably put forward a comprehensive proposal. But absent that, I also think that they probably would try to work specifically on farm worker issues and and try to address some of the challenges that are faced there, which I know is certainly important in California. I I do think they would also focus on issues like the Voting Rights Act. Healthcare, I think they would make efforts to in their minds, strengthen the Affordable Care Act. I think gun control would certainly be at the top of the list for a number of people. Tax reform, I think, would be an issue both with corporate and raising money through through also increasing taxes on people that are perceived as wealthy. There has been some discussion of reinstating the SALT deduction. Which quite frankly is a very regressive tax, or it is a regressive tax, excuse me. The benefits of a SALT deduction go primarily at higher-income people. But again, I think that would also be something that would be beneficial for California as a whole, should it be reinstated. Police reform, I think, would be something big, given the ongoing discussions nationwide. And of course, this is just a short list. I mean, the list of things that the Democrats would want to do will be frankly overwhelming, and you will begin to see, should they achieve this kind of power, a real struggle within the party to figure out what goes first, what comes next, et cetera, et cetera. So last, I do want to obviously talk about what does all this mean for Delano County? You know, big picture, you can you can probably, as I go through those earlier slides, figure out some spots that would be relevant for you all, but more specifically, I think there's a lot of opportunity for change under any of these election scenarios. Certainly, I think some present more opportunity than others, but I think really under any election scenario, we're going to have a lot of change. And any second administration will have a very active first congressional term after they're reelected. So again, under any scenario, I think we're we're likely to see a lot of activity. Again, with respect to local government funding and COVID- nineteen response, you know, I could go on and do a whole presentation just simply on the efforts that we've made with respect to trying to ensure that any congressional package that does pass related to COVID- nineteen does include local government funding directly to all units of local government. We've worked very hard on this. I thought we were very close, but then you could start to see some indications of the rug being pulled out from under us back in June and July. And, you know, now we've reached complete stalemate. I will say it's positive to see that many in Congress continue to stick by our sides with respect to funding for all local governments. And and you know, there is a chance still that they may get there. One of the updates that I'll provide you with again this afternoon via email is that we have gotten indications that the White House has increased their offer by about five hundred million dollars or billion, excuse me, overall for the funding package. So they've come up from about they're coming up, their their grain come up from about one trillion to one point five trillion. The Democrats, on the other hand, have come down from three point two to, or three point four, excuse me, to two point two. So they are getting closer to each other. You know, frankly, one of the big sticking points is this local government funding issue. And one of the things that I will share with you this afternoon is like, for instance, the House Ways and Means Committee. The minority party on the on the House side sent out an email on Friday late afternoon, basically arguing as to why local governments don't need additional funding. So that that's the messaging that's that's reaching out and making it more difficult to to get to an agreement on that issue. I do think that last chance grade, we've talked about it numerous times, we have excuse me. We have you know, a big challenge is there because it's a huge project that's going to require a ton of money, but any of the proposals that have been put forward by both the House and the Senate with respect to investing in infrastructure and the long-term reauthorization of our surface transportation programs will propose significant amounts of new funding for transportation nationwide. And so last chance grade should benefit under almost any scenario in the near future. Certainly, if Democrats were to win control of everything, I think they would push through an even greater and larger package that would create even more possibility for significant funding for last chance grade. But but again, even under the Republican-led or actually, I should say bipartisan Senate approach, funding for service transportation would go up something like twenty-six percent, maybe twenty-three. I forget exactly off the top of my head. But quite a bit, and that does pose a lot of opportunity. Once we get some of those things passed in the next Congress. I think, oh, I developed this PowerPoint a week ago when we hadn't heard the good news on the AES AEAS renewal for Contour at the airport. I know that Chair Hemmingson and I believe Supervisor Cowan both sit on that board and probably have been the most involved with the conversations there, but you know, we just got that cleared so that the Contour has got its renewal. And I I'm pretty sure that the community is pretty happy with that. Certainly, that's the message we get from the airport and are happy to have seen that go through. Just so you know, we did work pretty closely with Congressman Huffman and DeFazio and others on pushing that forward. And really, really working closely with DOT to encourage them to move this along and to also be as supportive as they possibly could be. It took longer than anyone liked, unfortunately, for it to get approved, but we're happy that it did. Moving on, and I'm I'm reaching the end of my presentation, so hopefully you all will have some questions for me that I can answer, but Pilt and SRS obviously remain critical. The funding for Pilt has been pretty steady and pretty safe over the past several years, which is good. It wasn't always that way. And we also just had an SRS reauthorization. So while the money continues to decline, we're doing okay there for the time being. I think, again, these are going to remain challenges for us moving forward that we're going to continue to have to focus on under any administration, under any Congress. Certainly, the same is true with appropriations for other key programs. I mentioned homelessness. Older Americans Act, other social service programs all rely on consistent federal funding. You know, and and boost in funding. And I think that, again, under any scenario in the election, we will have opportunities to continue to advocate for those programs and and, you know, see them further so that they can continue to benefit the communities nationwide. So with that, that's all I've got. Prepared and happy to answer any questions. I appreciate everyone's time.
Okay, Supervisors, questions for Greg?
Yeah, good morning, Greg. Thanks afternoon where you are. How you doing?
Well, thank you.
Okay, good to see you again. Let's revisit your assessment on the House. And I want to, you kind of went over it. You said it was unlikely there's going to be a switch in the House. Currently, I have a count of two hundred and thirty-two Democrats, one hundred and ninety-eight Republicans, one Libertarian and four vacancies. So you don't see the scenario where the House of Representatives can flip? That would be, I guess, thirty-four seats. You don't see a scenario on your in your crystal ball there where you see that fifty days out that might change?
Well, you know, Supervisor, anything can change, right? Fifty days is a long time. I think I read that early voting has already started in maybe one state or two. But again, you're right, anything can change. I'm not an election expert. I'm a lobbyist. I get my information from other people who pay more attention to polls than I do and know how to parse them a little bit better than I do. I don't think there's a whole lot of thought that Republicans have a chance to take it over. I think you may recall on one of the slides, I indicated that there were more Republican retirements than there were Democratic retirements.
That's sound that.
That's typically a fairly safe indicator that Republicans in expect to remain in the minority for another two years. And members choose to leave more often. That's an area because they they don't want to be in the minority, particularly in the House. It's not very fun. You don't do anything except vote no on everything. So, you know, anything's possible. I'm not ruling it out. I just simply think that it's less likely than the other scenarios.
I appreciate your assessment on this, and thank you very much.
Greg, would you give me an update on where we are exactly with SRS?
Well, it was reauthorized relatively recently. And so right now, as you know, Supervisor, you know, the the talk on SRS kind of dies down until it's really necessary to talk about it. So, you know, actively, there's not a whole lot going on. I mean, everything is COVID, COVID, COVID at the moment in Washington. Therefore, where we are is that most of Congress believes they've dealt with the issue, and we'll have to go back and talk to them once it becomes you know, the next, the the authorization expires. And hopefully that is post-COVID, so we can get people's attention more easily.
Right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from Supervisors?
Statement, Greg, thank you for all the work you do for us. It's really appreciated, especially the last few weeks, as we mentioned with Contour and working with DOT and just being another voice for us. Back in Washington DC, it's much appreciated, and I know that you're always there for us, and I appreciate your weekly updates. If she would say weekly, I'd say a few a week. Keeping us informed, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure everybody else does as well. So thank you very much. Sorry that we're not seeing you in person, but it's nice to see you on Zoom.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'd also like to echo Supervisor Cowan's accolades. I know, Greg, you you only join us physically once a year. I wish you could be here in person to join us. We we are close to COVID-free year, but not quite there yet. The work you have done on the county's behalf in Washington DC, especially on those big-ticket items, as was mentioned with our critical air service into Crescent City, last chance grade and federal funding through the Department of Transportation. Those pieces are so important to us. Very few people know that you're there and you're lobbying and you're speaking on the county's behalf constantly. And I know we don't pay a whole lot to do that, but that doesn't go unnoticed by the Supervisors, and I just want to say thank you again. Keep up the great work, and we look forward to having you in our presence for many years to come.
Thank you, Supervisor. It's a pleasure.
Yeah, Greg, I echo those sentiments also. Appreciate your ability to weave through this in your cat-like manner as you can do. And and get us the results, you know, that we so much depend on. So again, great, great job. Appreciate the update. I do wish we could meet in person. Probably gonna, we certainly are going to miss our trip back to Washington DC also, so. Anyway, appreciate it. Thanks for the update and keep up the good work.
Well, don't forget that you guys are actually good luck tokens now, because the last time you came, the Nationals won the World Series, so. You know, we'll we'll just have to make sure that whenever the group from Delano County comes out, that it occurs when the Nats are in the playoffs and, you know, doing better than the Giants.
Right. Well, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to overstep. Anyway.
I I only said that, you know, just as a little dig.
Yeah, no, I got you. All right. We're almost even. Okay, thanks again, Greg. We're going to move on with our agenda. Appreciate the update.
Thank you all. Have a nice day.
Okay. All right, so at this time, we are going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors, reconvene as the Board of Equalization, approve the assessment appeal withdrawal application for APN one oh two dash one four zero dash two three as requested by the Assessor's Office. Is somebody going to speak to this, Jay, or is this just the item that we sign off on?
Well, I believe the Assistant Assessor is on if there are any questions, but I think that the
Any question from Board members?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any public comment, Kylie?
I'm going to give it just a few more moments. And I'm not seeing any at this time, Chair.
Okay, and with that, if there are no more questions or comments from Board members, would you please poll vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkwitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to adjourn as the Board of Equalization, reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and review the fire safe plan as requested by this Fire Safe Plan Director. So this is in your pocket. You'll have time to review it. It's a fairly large document, so this is just more information than anything. If there are any questions or comments at this time, we can take them. But should get a chance to review it before we speak out too much. So is there any public comment, Kylie?
Chair, I'm going to give it a few more moments. No, there isn't any at this time.
Okay, anything from Board members?
Chair, if I could add something. A woman that submitted this, I can't think of her name off the top of my head, I apologize. She was wondering if the Supervisors can just kind of take note on how long it took them for to review it. She said it's for grant purposes. I'm not sure if that's possible or not, but I wanted to let you know just in case.
What what was the question again?
She was wondering if the each supervisor can keep track on how long it took them to review it. Because she said she needs it for grant purposes.
Okay.
So just to take note of that if possible.
So, okay, so we need more days or less days?
We just need the amount of time that each individual has put into reviewing it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, and with that, if there's no comments or questions, we're going to move on to legislative and budget issues, Jay. Are there any?
Nothing specific that is already on the agenda. We, I will talk about the budget when we go back to number eighteen that we haven't done yet.
Oh, right on. Oh, I skipped right over that. You should have said something. Sorry about that. Yep, item number eighteen, that certainly not, I shouldn't have slid it back. We do have a ten thirty item. We're going to open the public hearing to consider the recommended budget as amended and all submitted special district budgets for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year. And continue the hearing for fourteen days. Approve the position changes as outlined in attachment A and approve the annual children's budget as presented as requested by the Auditor Controller and County Administrative Office. Jay, you want to speak to that a little bit? Apologize for skipping over that.
But finally, the first thing I'd like to do on on number number two, as far as the recommendation, I'd like that not to be approved, but to say as in the staff report considered. We're awaiting comments back from bargaining groups, and we'll see if there are any comments regarding the position list. But for right now, I would just like the Board to consider that, and then we'll bring that back for any final action at the end of the fourteen days. As the Board has seen back in June, there was a recommended budget presented. It was the interim spending plan. Since that time, the budget team has met. And we've seen the year end come back from the Auditor Controller. And before you today is a balanced budget. Utilizing the fund balance and whatever one-time funding has come in. As you'll remember, we didn't have a lot of discussion over lost revenue at the time because it looked like some of our projections were going to come in relatively accurate, even with the COVID issue. And we we did see that as the result. There are some revenues that are down, and there are also some expenditures that are down because of the pandemic. One of the significant one-time fundings that have come in is the CARES Act, which allows us to offset expenses related to the COVID response, primarily public health, public safety and other employees that have been primarily directed towards the response from the county. This is a nationwide funding source that counties are, are being asked to certify and then expend according to the the Federal Treasury's guidelines. They've come back with some additional information that allows us to better understand what the responsibility of each individual entity is. It will allow some flexibility within the budget to do a few other things and at least for the remaining eight months of this year. It does not necessarily assist us as we go into future years. And we'll see as Mr. Burns brought up in his presentation, whether or not there's any stomach through the the legislation or legislators and the administration to assist local government directly without it going through the state of California. CARES Act money is actually allocated through the state. So, we have that additional level of red tape that we have to address. The budget as it is right now is meeting the basic priorities of the Board with a lot of unknowns due to the continuing issues that come with the pandemic. Obviously, we can go in and out of restrictions locally through the state of California, which affects our economy. And so, sales tax and to a lesser extent, property tax could be affected, but sales tax in particular. TOT seems to be bouncing back after the restrictions at the beginning. We were down a little over 17% for the last two quarters. And if we don't go back into a shutdown, we should be looking at a relatively standard year and that's what our projections show. The Auditor Controller did a lot of work providing these numbers and punching these into the budget right up to the last day. And any significant changes to the general fund are shown as typically going to be related to projects and/or the CARES Act funding. So, at this point, the recommendation before the Board is to open the public hearing to consider the position changes in attachment A and approve the annual children's budget as presented. And then, if there are any other directives from the collective board, we'll take those into account and make any changes between now and the end of the two-week period.
Questions or comments from Board members?
Yeah Jay, I have a question. I'd like to address the $31,534,242 general budget. Where is the, I didn't see it in the report, where is the $96,000 the county pays itself back for the, to the Stimson Fund? And does the Bakra have the ability to make that payment this year?
Oh yeah, I apologize for not hitting on that note. The Border Coast Regional Airport Authority has indicated to the Auditor Controller that they will be making that payment. And specifically where in the budget as far as the fund? I think the Auditor Controller could probably tell you where that's sitting, but that is the commitment right now from the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority.
Thank you.
Is that it? Any other comments or questions, Board members?
Yes, Chairman, for Jay. Jay, you opine quite effectively in here on several areas of revenue that continue to decrease in the county. A lot of legacy from the 2008 property tax reassessments are still coming in. Where the impact to our general fund is gonna be substantial potentially. And if, as Supervisor Berkowitz mentioned, the SRF type payments don't come forth, increased sales rack, sales tax revenues aren't realized or TOT revenues, our general fund will continue to slide. And I'm curious how a county that puts well over 70% of our general fund dollars into public safety continues to fund even at this level our ability to respond and provide service to our citizens in an effective level without taking some kind of action to shift dollars around. How, how exactly are we going to get through some of these tight times which you tend to touch on here in this, in this memo to the Board?
I think the Board knows that, you know, every year I touch on these issues. Delmar County has a very tenuous budget on an annual basis. You know, we do not overinflate when times are better, meaning we do not have large hirings for our general fund. Our general fund doesn't typically allow that. The, we're fortunate right now. I think that, and I've said this to a couple of people. I believe without the COVID issue this year, this might have been one of our finest budget years in the sense that we would have been able to get to the, to balance, and I'm not saying that augmenting the budget, but to balance the budget would have been less of a, you know, a typical struggle. Because the Assessor has been able to begin catching up in regards to property taxes after the recession. The market for housing in Delmar County has been robust. Sales tax came in as projected, which means that with the economy the way it is right now nationally and locally, people have been spending any excess money that they have. It will be interesting to see as we go over the next several months, how this pandemic has affected people that do continue to work and have income. Less people are traveling outside of the United States and definitely it appears outside of even the state of California or at least the general area. And I'm, I'm curious to see the purchase of vehicles and especially recreational vehicles, how that will affect us as we go through this next year. Because I, I don't know if everybody's seen, but there are a number of brand-new vehicles or newly purchased vehicles on the road right now. And as we see people coming through, you see that statewide, which does come back to us. Even though we only get one cent back on the dollar for our sales tax, that can help us get to balance every year. I think everybody's also aware we get 19 cents or so on the dollar in regards to property tax. So, as the values of our base goes up, that can help us get to balance every year too. Getting to the bad part of it is that the state of California's unfunded liability that they charge the local government is around $500,000 as soon as we pass this budget. So, when the Board passes this budget, we know we're gonna have an additional $500,000 that we gotta deal with the next year. And the state does not assist with that. You know, the state has basically told us, you need to deal with your issues locally. And we do that annually. We adjust within individual budgets. Obviously, there's no additional spending if the money is not there. And the Board is committed to public safety. And when I say public safety, we have a number of services we provide. I'll go over those. Hopefully, I'm not gonna bore people too much, but we do arrest people, we put people in jail, we prosecute people, we defend people, and then we we deal with people through probation after the fact, and that's youth and adults. And so, all of those services are mandated services and we have to fund those. And the Board of Supervisors is committed to funding that. Spending more money has not been a luxury that we've had, but we have tried to keep up as best we can. And I think it goes back to the individual departments doing the best that they can do to tighten their belts. The budget team putting pressure on everybody to tighten up even further when we need to. And the Board of Supervisors understanding what situation we're in. It's gonna be going on annually until there is some other situation that changes our financial base. We have a hard time every year keeping up with the mandated expenditures that come down on our, on our services. We provide a lot of services. A tremendous number of those services are funded through the state or federal government, but the ones that are usually affect our locals and our visitors the most are through our general fund. So, it's, it's annually a struggle, but that's our job and that's what we've been doing is to try to keep up. Continuing to do that will be difficult.
Yeah Jay, thanks. Anybody else? Yeah, I just, I just wanna say, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna follow up on Jay's comments, but if you have something to say Chairman, please.
Well, I, I was just gonna say it's encouraging to hear that Greg, under any scenario of the outcome of the election, that, you know, the legislature is not through with the COVID issue and that we could possibly see continuing funding from the federal government. Because I think the state virtually is, is gonna be out of money, which means in the long term, in the long run, eventually, we're gonna see that hit, I think, our local government, because I don't think we're gonna see, I think we're gonna see the state possibly pulling back a little bit and wanting us to fund some of these, these other things. As Jay said, these unfunded mandates. So, I think, I think it's encouraging to hear that at least for maybe the next short-term period, and I'm gonna say maybe next year, we will see some more funding on the COVID front from the federal governments to, to help and maybe that will come directly to counties. Yeah, go ahead Chris, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I guess, I'm glad you brought that up Chairman, and I guess that's my fear. Is that we continue to see retraction of funds going back to state coffers and not flowing into county coffers. I know RCRC and CSAC both are lobbying extremely hard to ensure that those federal dollars flow down to the counties. But as we've experienced over the last four months of this COVID crisis, the state has been very unwilling to release a lot of those federal dollars. And even with some of those federal dollars that just came in, it's just now with the efforts of our of our auditor to get us to a point of what I would call balanced or break even. It doesn't really get us ahead to provide those necessary services which our general fund provides. And I, I guess that's my biggest concern here. Even if the Fed continues to grace the country with stimulus-type packages, which would support a lot of our general fund-type services, I have little to no faith that the state will follow suit. And I, I guess it comes down to whether or not this county wants to attempt to take care of themselves. So, we support the best, to our best ability, those, those efforts to fund that general fund, specifically the public safety aspects of it or roads. Or do we continue to throw our hands up in the air and not doing anything? And I know we've had a lot of folks speak to us over the last decade that something needs to change, especially as it relates to public safety. And I know this Board has been very committed to public safety. CAO Serena has reflected upon that just in his current statement. But my fear is, is that the outline areas, specifically the rural areas, will continue to be not as well enforced through our public safety efforts as it will be in the center of town per se. And I, I wanna make sure that our Board's conviction to try to do this inside internally and not rely so much on the state and all these unfunded mandates that continue to shuffle down, that we, we try to fight the best we can, but our voices just aren't heard as a small county of 28,000 people. And I just wanna make sure that this voice in this county is heard, that if we can't do it through the state, if we can't do it through the feds, we try to do it within.
Thank you. Yeah, and I agree with you. I mean, this, this Board, the overwhelming majority of this Board has been to support enforcement and, and our roads issues. So, I appreciate that. Kylie, is there any public comment?
Yes. Linda, you're on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Okay, so, you know, I, I've noticed there's been quite a few new vehicles in the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department. And I've also noticed that a lot of money is spent on Health and Human Services outside of our county. And then, if you're really concerned about spending money, then I would suggest that the sister city thing would stop immediately because we don't have the money for that. So, if we're pandering for the one cent sales tax increase, that, that's just not gonna cut it with the people. People aren't gonna go for that. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment Kylie?
Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, I would request an entertaining motion.
Just to clarify Chair, that the Board does not spend dollars on the sister city. It's not allocated in either budgets that we're considering. Is that correct?
There is a $2,500 allocation that has been consistent in the last three budgets. If there was something that was attributed to the sister city, it could be pulled from that budget, but it's, it's a very minimal. It's $2,500. Similar to the Median project and the porta-potties on South Beach.
Thank you Jay, I appreciate that. So, I'm still looking for a motion.
I moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And item number two on there is to consider, not approve, the, the position changes. So, with that, if there's no more comments or questions, Kylie, would you poll the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, so, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, with that, our next meeting is September 22nd, 2020 at 10 o'clock. We'll see you all there.